Good evening. Evening, and welcome to Issaquah City Council Services and Safety Committee. We have two items on our agenda this evening. Agenda Bill 7413, Eastside Fire and Rescue Interlocal Agreement, and Agenda Bill 7072, Central Park Pad Number One Construction. One of our members does have to leave in about a half hour, so one of the things I want to do is, at the end of the meeting this evening, I've had a couple of members of the public who had questions around the senior center. We're going to have a presentation next month from Jeff Watling with the city. So what I'm going to do is, after our two agenda items, I'm going to ask for public comment in regards to the senior center. If anybody here wants to ask questions, that'll help us get the information for the update next month, and I'd appreciate it. So with that, let's kick off 7413 with Jennifer Olson, our Finance Director. Evening.
Sorry about that. Is it on? Thank you, Chair. The city provides fire services to the community by partnering with other entities through the Eastside Fire and Rescue, and an interlocal agreement was created back in 1999 for these services. The EFOR Board has proposed amendments to the interlocal agreement. There are two proposed amendments which include a five-year extension out to December 2026 with subsequent future extensions in 10-year intervals instead of seven. Next proposed amendment would change the Partner Opt-Out Notice from one year to three years. This change will give the ILA partners more time for potential increase in financial commitment and to essentially regroup. The final amendment proposes to change the funding formula update from four years down to two years. This change keeps the cost currents and better aligns with a biennial budgeting process. Chief Clark is here to answer any questions that you might have. The other partners to the ILA have all approved the amendments as proposed, and city administration recommends the proposed amendments to the EFOR ILA. So I'd be happy to answer any questions of the committee.
Questions?
I think this might be a question for the chief. I was just wondering if there are other districts that are, have sort of a similar layout in terms of the timing, just in terms of kind of best practices with other districts or other, even outside of, you know, the state and other places where this has worked?
I personally am not familiar with another fire agency that is held together with the ILA by agreements.
Right.
It's very creative, so I'm not familiar with that. There are, however, some contracts within King County even, fire service contracts with, so for instance, the city of Sea-Tac with the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority where they entered into a 20-year contract. They're not part of the Regional Fire Authority, but they entered into a very long contract in order to ensure services and to ensure for planning.
Okay.
And those types of things. That's the only one I'm aware of that's that long-term right now.
So a lot of the changes, as I'm reading through, have to do with just better planning and being able to, not only better planning as you're looking out into the future, but then shortened versions so for budgeting, so you can look at budgeting in the right way?
Yeah, actually, all of this, the, the extension itself that moves it, the five-year that moves it to a 10-year agreement, that, the main impetus behind that is long-term planning and stability moving forward so we can have that. The other two amendments have to do with language that has to be updated because we're changing the terms. So we had to address those two one way or the other.
Okay.
And so the last one, I think you're referring to, where we go from smoothing, what I call smoothing, from a four-year, every four years updating the numbers to every two years. It's simply the new formula that was adopted in this last, in 2015 with the last renegotiation. That's, that'll be fully implemented and smoothed in by 2022. And rather than updating on assessed value and call volume every four years, we'll do it every two years, which will just be a fair reflection for all of the partners with the data that's actually going on at the time.
Okay.
So these changes certainly look reasonable, and it seems like a longer time horizon does allow for more planning. We're lucky enough to have on Services and Safety Committee one of our two Issaquah Board of Directors of Eastside Fire, so I'm going to ask Councilmember Barbara if she and Mary Lou Polly have taken a look at this and are both comfortable with it going forward.
We have, and we've gone through it at the last EFOR meeting, and yes, there is, we didn't see any issues there, that there was just benefits.
Well, then that seems pretty straightforward. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this issue before we deliberate it? No? All right. Any questions? I mean, internally, yeah, it seems pretty straightforward. I think the only question would be, it's recommended to come back, this is the part that I always should know before I sit down, but I don't know. Full council on the 15th. That sounds good to me. You guys?
Yes.
Three thumbs up for full council on the 15th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move to Agenda Bill 7072, Central Park Pad One Construction, with Jennifer Fink, Parks Planner. And/or Jeff Watling, our Parks Director.
You left him standing there.
It was obviously not Jennifer Fink.
That was fantastic. Thank you, Jeff Watling, Director of Parks and Recreation. Jennifer Fink will be driving on the PowerPoint as we, as we move through this. Thank you. Good evening. My hope tonight is to utilize the memo, our staff report, provide an overview of that, walk through, through that, and certainly the complexities of this project, lay out the staff recommendation, and then certainly open up for, for discussion. Excited to be here tonight, as I had the chance to give the overview on May 1st to the full council. We opened bids on April 26th for this project. We had two bids that we opened. Relatively soon after we opened bids, one of the bidders withdrew for a calculation error in their bid tab. They withdrew that bid. If we were to, and I mentioned this on May 1st, I'll highlight it again, as, as we looked at those two bids and looked at the total costs that both of those bidders were providing in their, their bid estimate, they were about $127,000 off, so about a 4.3% differential between those two bids. The apparent low bid is Teradynatics in the amount of $2,771,120. That's an important matter, that differential when we really dove into the numbers, because as we're going to discuss tonight, really the options we have before us is that is a, a number that's above our engineer's estimate is the options that I mentioned on May 1st, and that two of those options have to do with rejecting the bid, considering rejecting the bid and rebidding immediately, or rejecting the bid and rebidding some point in the future. The other option that we have really centers around awarding this bid, awarding the base and any combination of the alternatives, we'll walk through a little bit later, as well as including, accepting all of the alternates or none of the alternates. But first, maybe some analysis we looked at in terms of current conditions. What's the climate, what's the construction climate going on right now? It's pretty clear that the construction market here in the Seattle, Puget Sound area has outpaced the national average in recent years. One construction firm that we looked at that did an analysis showed almost a 4% higher increase in costs compared to, in Q1 of this year compared to last year. That same firm projected another 4% increase moving forward into next year in terms of materials costs. We also did some, some research and talking to our colleagues in the Eastside cities as well as King County cities. They too are seeing and experiencing bids in 2017 that are, that are frequently higher than estimates, coming in 10 to 20% higher. That is a number comparable to what we saw in our bid here. As we also look at the site itself, the, as you may know, the site that, that Central Park is on is a, I'm not going to get the history exactly right, but it really is comprised of a lot of fill from the Highlands Development, so that really presents some, some issues that I think contractors were aware of. And if you look at where a bulk of the cost increase was in this estimate, it's in the base bid. But as we take all of those existing conditions, the bid climate conditions, the onsite conditions, really led us as staff to not recommend either of the rebidding options, either rebidding immediately or in the future, if the intent or the goal of that, of rebidding is to try and get reduced costs. We don't think either of those rebidding options will in and of themselves produce a lower cost. We think there's a real risk, given, given those knowns. So where that leaves us is looking at the options of awarding this bid. And so I thought, as we walked through the staff report a little bit, I'd, I'd start where we left off last December. Last December, as we were working through budget deliberations, I think there were some real concerns identified by you as council and even as staff that the overall costs for completing this project were continuing to, to increase. We introduced, at that time, a proposal to consider phasing Pad One as one way of, of looking at reducing the cost of the, the project. As we explored that, that looks more viable, and, and I bring that up because that's, that's part of the bid that's before you now, is phasing Pad One, and that phasing really primarily consisted of not building the permanent parking lot, but creating interim parking, alternative parking with some of the existing paved spaces in and around Pad One. That, that phased approach, though, if you recall, in December didn't necessarily address all of our funding need. As we left our conversation in December, we had identified this idea of creating bid alternates and realizing some of these key elements of this project that were desired by the community and by public outreach, the LED lighting, the expansion of the parking on the parkway, some of the other amenities were an additional, at that time we're estimating an additional $415,000. And, and I think at that time that we concluded that discussion in December, it was decided not to allocate any additional funds at that time, but let's proceed with finishing design of this project and permitting on this project, and then get this project out to bid, and let's have this discussion now, quite frankly, when we award the bids. So what that has done is it's, it now gives us real costs to have this conversation around. I wish I could say those real costs were less. Those real costs take that number of $415,000, and just looking at a total cost for the project, that rose to just over $1 million. So from $415 to, to $1 million. If I could highlight real quickly, though, the, the bid framework, and, and this is spelled out in the, in the staff report, because I think it's important as we move forward with whatever recommendation, along with creating these four alternates, we also looked at ways of costing this project, expending this project to, to save us some money. I mentioned this briefly at our, at May 1st. It goes into a little more detail with the staff report. This bid includes us purchasing directly the turf and the lighting, whatever lighting option we decide on, whether it's the halide lighting or the LED lighting, but we would purchase those materials from King County Directors Association of Purchasing Department, otherwise known as KCDA. They're a co-op agency. We've been a partner with them since 1997. In essence, they go out and bid these products, and we can buy direct off of their bids. And so what that has allowed us to do is not only have real costs for that, but not without a contractor markup, but also get the lowest price possible. So as we work through the recommendation, whatever that, wherever we might land, if we do land, we'll have, we'll be buying the turf. There'll be a separate KCDA agreement for turf and for lighting as we, as we move forward in, in this project. Couple other real quick elements, we're going to have an agreement with Puget Sound Energy. We need to create a new meter for the field lighting, so that's an agreement that we'll need to sign. And then, related to the interim parking, or this, this parking space we're creating, rather than creating permanent lights, we propose entering into an agreement with an agency called Intolite, where basically what we're doing is we're renting light poles from them, and understanding as an interim parking lot, it's going to be far more cost-effective to do that than to build all of the infrastructure for lighting, just to know that once the, the permanent parking lot is built, we won't need that, that other one. A little bit on the alternates themselves, we ended up with four alternates in this bid. The first alternate being those road safety improvements, Central Park Lane, we had a lot of discussion about that. Jen, if you want to pull up the site plan, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. This is the main road that's on what would be the western edge of, of the field right now. The parking spaces in that area are six feet wide. As this park, as, as we've lived with this park for 10-plus years, functionally, they're just not performing well, so this would expand that, those parking spaces to eight feet and create a lot more functionality within the park. Second alternate is an additional picnic shelter that you'll see, the, the one farthest up on this line, that would be farthest east. Third alternate is amenities and site furnishings within, within the improvement, that includes in the field area.
Yeah.
It's primarily field and bleachers, et cetera. And then the fourth alternate has to do with some, the, the wall, some mounding that's going to be created there for seat walls and some planting around that landscape area. If you could point out that landscape area real quick, one additional thing that that design element is allowed to do, and you may recall this from community outreach, there's a lot of discussion about losing that existing field, that this is a field you can just go drop in and use as a grass field. If this was a fully fenced athletic field, it doesn't feel as inviting. And so what that mounding allows us to do is, this whole northern edge, or about two-thirds of it, will not be fenced. So if you'd imagine, the mound allows to stop the balls, but from an experience standpoint and from the parking lot and, and whatnot, it's going to feel much more welcoming when that field's not in use, that hey, this is open and available to just use as a drop-in purpose. So small design element that feeds into some of these alternatives. So all of that background to, to say, when we look at, and if you look at the table on page four of the staff report, now taking this bid from Teradynatics as apparent low bid, and looking at how that feeds into what the project cost and the project budget looks like now, like I said, in December of last year, we were looking and estimating an additional $415,000 need. You'll see, going to the bottom line, $1,088,550 would be the, the need given the, the bid amount. This assumes the same, or starts with the same revenue sources that we identified last December, $3.730 million in available and current revenue we have identified for this project. I'd also want to point out, moving forward, that, that need, that funding gap includes a $338,000 contingency. This is important. As I mentioned before about the dirt work and some of the unknowns that, that exist upon that site, this would, that number represents a 15% contingency on the base work and also the Central Park Lane work. The two, the two elements of work that probably have the most significant dirt work, we think that's an important number as we move into, into construction for this project. So funding options, as we started to look at how we might consider funding this project if we were to award the bid, we, we saw, as we worked with finance and administration, two primary funding sources to consider. One of these we discussed last December, that would be the Park Mitigation Fund. Another potential funding source would be the General Fund. Page six of the staff report, maybe, maybe we can pull that up. Jennifer, it might be helpful for everyone to review. The table on page six, it, to help at least frame this discussion, we took an, an effort at, would be impossible to create a spreadsheet to look at every single option of base and alternates and whatnot, so we decided to create bookends. Two bookends that really represent the two extremes of what we might consider before us. The first bookend would be fully, fully funding the project, the complete project, and fully funding it with General Fund. That's one bookend. The other bookend, item two, would be fully funding the project and fully funding that with Park Mitigation Funds. Area three really then says, any, any options or set of books that you want to purchase within those books really fall between those two bookends. As you look through this table, what we tried to do is show what happens with that funding amount. So within item one, if we were to fully fund this with General Fund, if you go all the way to the far right, you see what that would do from a projected fund balance for General Fund. There's also identified, I wish I had a laser pointer, but I don't, there are some other pending, city, citywide pending amendments to the General Fund that, as we worked with finance, Jen Olson carefully wanted to point out, that if we were to fully fund this project, it would leave an approximate $14 million fund balance to the General Fund. Another important thing to note is these two bookends relate. So if it was fully funded with General Fund, that would leave approximately a $3.4 million balance in the Park Mitigation Fund. So if you look at the second column that, that shows that information on the Park Mitigation Fund, there's an estimated ending fund balance in '17 of the Park Mitigation Fund of $3.4 million. If we were to fully fund this project with Park Mitigation Fund dollars, that's where you'd see that million-dollar reduction.
Jeff, I want to point out, because I thought I understood this, this spreadsheet, but it looks like when you say "fully fund," you're talking about the $1,088,550, not the $4,818,000.
Thank you. Fully fund the project and address the funding gap.
Fully fund the gap.
Fully fund the, the million-dollar gap.
Gap, not fully fund the almost $5 million. I think that's important. We're not talking about taking $5 million out of General Fund, right? This, this bookend one would be taking $1,088,000 out of General Fund.
Thank you for that clarification. Absolutely. Correct. Correct. So taking the existing revenue sources for the project and just, yeah.
Doing that increment, the, the.
The million dollars. Correct. Correct. So to, to staff's recommendation, as we began to look at this, and then certainly want to open this up for discussion, as we looked at balancing all the myriad of, of things for this project, priorities for this project as a, as a bond project, seeking to address the, the community feedback we heard throughout the public process on what's currently happening within, within Central Park, a recommendation would be to fully fund this project and fund the gap, allocate, allocate $1,088,550 from the General Fund to make up that difference. We feel that would do a number of things, certainly fulfill the, the 2013 park bond obligation, I think it would address the community desire of some of these other elements, the less intrusive lighting with the LED lighting, addressing some of our, again, functional issues happening within the park with parking, et cetera. I think it maximizes certainly the field use. We're adding an additional 2,000 hours of playable field time into our, into our system. I think, just as importantly, it preserves the, the Park Mitigation Fund. It allows this project to be fully funded, and as we're adopting the Park Strategic Plan, allows us to move into our next phase of planning and projects within our park system as opposed to coming back and needing to do an additional element or two to this, to this project. I think what it also represents and reflects, and the PowerPoint slide reflects this, it really creates a diverse and balanced funding package. For a, for a multimillion-dollar project, it often, and really necessitates multiple funding sources, this pie chart really intends to say, if, if we were to proceed with this recommendation and, and fund that gap with the General Fund, you begin to see our funding sources from really largest to smallest. The largest would be the, the park bond. 2013 park, park bond allocation would make up 32% of the funding package, the 1.5 million. A General Fund allocation would be about 23%. Right behind that would be the Park Mitigation Fund, would be about 21%, and then those grants where we really leveraged our local dollars, 1.1 million, 24%. Actually, it's a little more than the General Fund, forgive me, would also make up that, that point. There's another real important sliver, but, but vital part of the pie. It's not a complete pie without community partners. Issaquah Soccer Club had committed 5,000, has committed $5,000 to this project as well. So there's plenty of discussion. With that, I'll be quiet and open it up for discussion.
Thanks, Jeff. Questions? I'll, I'll, I'll start with one. So I, I do want to point out that one of our options that isn't in that spreadsheet that we looked at is, there is $435,000 worth of those alternates, right? So if we wanted to, we could approve something, the $1,088,000 minus that 435. So, you know, council sort of, when we were discussing it, we had a range between just the core project and then these alternates, and so I want to point out that that is, that's one of our options as well. Questions?
If the options were taken off the table at this moment in time, when would we be able to put them back?
The alternates?
Yeah.
Boy, good question. You know, I, I think, looking at the, the four alternates, the, I think the road widening project would, I don't know how I'd answer when we would do it, but it would be another disruption to the, to the park. I think the, the other amenities and mounding pieces that, again, are, I think, pretty, pretty woven into the base work of the project, to go back and do those again, we'd be looking at, and I, once we identify funding, year two, three, whatever that is, I think the, the fourth one being the picnic shelter of the alternates, that's probably the cleanest one in terms of, to, to come back and do later. Whether that's a year or two out, again, would be dependent upon available funding.
You said there was a fourth? Roads, the mound, the picnic shelter.
The road, the roads, the mounds, and then the site furnishings and amenities were a, a mix of things. And I, you know, and on funding on when we would come back and be able to do that.
Right?
Do you, and, and I'm sorry if I missed it when we were going through the packet, do you have a breakout of the costs for the alternates?
Yes. We did. And Fink, can you help with, I have?
The alternates fully funded, including the LED upgrades, is about $550,000. If we were to just fully fund the base, we'd need about 500.
So I think, I think, I, I think I have the information you may be asking. So going in order, order, Alt 1 being the, the widening of Central Park Lane, that is When you incorporate, that includes that contingency dollar we'd want to carry, just so we know. Picnic Shelter, that was Alt 2, was $130,449. Alt 3, the amenities and site furnishings, $57,486. The mound walls and plantings, that last Alt was $101,706. And just while we're speaking, the option for the LED
And just while we're speaking, the option for the LED lighting upgrade, remember we put the halide lights in the base.
Right.
And so the upgrade cost for LED lighting came back with the KCDA costs at $92,200.
An increase of $92,000.
An increase, exactly. Yep. I wish that was the total cost of LED field lighting. It's just the difference.
Other questions?
Can you, could you explain one more time what, what is in the amenities at that piece of the?
Yeah, Jen, do you want to, you probably know a little bit more about the specifics than I do.
Yeah, in the amenities are some things like some padding on some of the backstops. The, I'm trying to recall what else was in there. Sure?
Dave, Dave, you'll probably want to get up to the microphone. This is Dave Andrews, our landscape architect.
Dave Andrews, Andrews Landscape Architect. So, alternate number three. Alternate number three, which is essentially site furniture items, includes some backstop padding, trash bins, a scoreboard, portable mounds. We have three portable mounds that, they're just fiberglass mounds so that we don't have to have a permanent mound out in the field, soccer goals and bike racks. And then, so as Jeff mentioned, alternate number one is the road widening, alternate number two is the picnic shelter, alternate number three is that amenity package that I just described. And then in alternate number four are the, the walls and the seat walls and the sort of stuff that really is sort of, as you said, woven into the base work. So alternate number three is relatively easy, you know, to sort of plug and play, if you will. Alternate number four becomes more complex to try to come back and build later.
Okay. Other questions?
So with the, the park mitigation fund, if, if there were two options, one was working with this additional amount out of the general fund and the other bookend was coming out of the park mitigation fund. So can you just speak to if that came out of the park mitigation fund in addition to what is already posed with the base, how that would, how, how would that work?
Yeah.
Moving forward with Prost and?
Yeah, so currently there is a million dollars budgeted for this project out of the park mitigation fund. If that additional million dollars, if we were to fully fund the project, it came out of the mitigation fund, it's estimated, looking at the, at the spreadsheet, that we'd have about $2.4 million remaining in the park mitigation fund if we fully funded it, that gap out of the mitigation fund as well. I think to your question about, as we look forward and know that there are other, I think throughout our park system, as we've done our, our first phase of public outreach with our park strategic plan, I think it's pretty clear that there are opportunities and needs throughout our parks, trails and open space system to address. So I think that mitigation funding will certainly be an important revenue source. It's probably won't be the, the only revenue source, but will be a, a necessary revenue source for a number of other investments that we make throughout this, throughout the system. I don't have specifics on what those will be. I think as we go through the strategic planning process, it's pretty clear though, our neighborhood parks, our community parks, again, other, other spaces, both existing and new, are, there's going to be a need for reinvestment back into it. I would also point out that certainly what's, what's within the two bookends would be any combination of these two revenue sources.
Right, okay.
You know, of partially funding with a certain percentage of funding from either one to add up to the million dollars.
Okay.
But I think as we discussed with administration and finance, best preserve the park mitigation fund. Fully funding this out of the general fund balance allows that mitigation fund to stay at a, a healthy estimated level at over $3 million as we move forward. So that was, I think what framed, at least shaped our recommendation.
So I have a question, and you can phone a friend on this one. I think you may need to. So on the general fund, can we talk a little bit about our, what this, we're at 16031 with some pending amendments, we'd be at 14043. Want to understand that within the context of what our financial guidance is on that fund?
I have a friend that I love to call who is great to give financial policies and et cetera. Jen Olson, our finance director, is here and can probably lay out what that represents.
That would be great.
Good.
Sorry to put you on the spot. So we'll give, we'll give her a second to bring that data up because, because that's really the question that I have around. I, I suspect we're in pretty good shape on that general fund, but I want to understand beyond being in pretty good shape, what, what, what that means. Welcome back.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Just pulling up some general fund fund balance information that I have at my fingertips always. Thank you for bearing with me. As we look at this proposed amendment to the general fund, if, if the, this was the source, then we're anticipating for 2017, and this is preliminary forecast for the, for the end of the year, would, would ideally be the, the 14, 14, over $14 million figure that, that Jeff provided for you. What that would mean is that the general fund then would, would likely end at around the, as a percent of expenditures from a financial policy standpoint, about the 33 percentile. So if we take that in as compared to the financial policy min and max range of the 8% to the 15%, it would still leave the general fund in a very healthy situation.
So our, so I just want to make sure I heard that right. So our general financial policy is to maintain reserves of eight to 15%, which is to say the amount of money at the end of the year is eight to 15% of total expenses that occur during the year.
That's correct.
And if we were to take, if we were to go with this bookend one option, we would still be at 33%, so well, 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 well beyond the 15%.
That is correct.
Gotcha. Okay. I think it's an important element of, of the conversation. Questions? Questions for Jen now that we have another guest for this?
Uh, no, I, that's where I was heading next, so.
Sorry.
No, no, I'm answering that.
So do we want to open it up to public comment?
Yes.
All right, let's open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak to this issue this evening? Can I come to the microphone and, and you're welcome to identify yourself in your relation to the city if you would like, and I'll give you three minutes.
Hello, everybody. Gina Ray, Gina Tyletki, Ray is my maiden name, sometimes I use for work. Isakua Soccer Club, representing the Isakua Soccer Club. And I just wanted to acknowledge the work of the department, the Parks and Recs Department, and how much work and effort has gone into this project and, and the incredible amount of detail. And that we, we, all of our sports leaders that are here and are not here really appreciate that and, and the attempt to, to make this park a reality. And I just wanted to address a couple of things on the alternates as we're speaking. And, you know, great conversation on that. And from the alternate perspective, they're all important in, in their own way, but one of the things that's critically important to that park is the park, the expanded parking as part of the park because the safety aspect that that is going to bring for the children and the kids and the parents and the cars is going to be, is going to be so beneficial because we don't, we can't afford to have one, one hurt kid because of a, of that, of that parking lot. So I just wanted to mention that. All the alternates are important. The LED lighting for our, our neighbors that are sharing that space with us, very important as well. So I just wanted to make those comments. And again, thank you to yourself, the, the Services and Safety Committee for your efforts in this regard, and we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here today who'd like to speak? Sir, you'd like to come forward? Here to identify yourself?
My name is Peter Kim. I'm also an ISC parent. I also am a resident on 24th, which is the street east. And I'm very pleased to hear the progress and the considerations from the last meeting earlier this winter with respect to particularly the lighting and the, and the road safety. I'm not going to spend a lot of time. I echo the comments by the, the previous commenter. The road safety as a resident who goes through the park, drives through the park is an absolute must with respect to the safety of the kids. If I heard the presentation correctly, the, the phasing the, the parking expansion later on is a concern to the extent that we know there's going to be a lot more traffic that's going to work, work through 24th, my street, park on 24th. So, you know, again, I'm a big proponent for the, for the project only because seeing the kids and the community kids not having access to the fields is, I think, not tenable anymore for our community. And so I'm a big proponent. But, and again, the, the plan sounds terrific, but I just also wanted to note that the parking, the parking and the traffic are still significant concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
My name is Mary Lynch and I'm a resident of 2690 Northwest Oak Crest Drive. First I want to say is, one of my concerns is with the overruns of this project and the others is I haven't really seen a compilation given because we know the skate park is going to overrun and we haven't funded the street's work with that. We've added money with the Trader Joe's project. I haven't seen that accounted for. And also with the 62nd, I think that was something like $4 million short of funding for that one, that we haven't identified where that's coming from. So as we go forward with all these projects, we have additional cost, I think we really need to show where that money's coming from. And also go back and look at priorities again because there's still other projects that we haven't started or planned, and are those going to be pushed back and what's going to affect those? I look at the CIP and nothing's in there for the Providence Point stoplight that's, you're going to be looking at tomorrow. So I think there's some big gaps in here that we haven't looked. The other thing I've given some public comment I haven't heard anything about is you keep talking about the safety here, yet the city has approved for Front Street to narrow those parking lanes down by those two feet, and that's already been done. So I really question, why are we going to widen? I'm not saying it's, I, I agree with the wider sidewalks, but if one part of the city we've spent city money to narrow them down, why are we spending money to widen them back up if they're so unsafe? We need to have a very clear set safety standards for parking and sidewalks. In that park, they should be going much slower and much less traffic than we have on Front Street. Why are we putting the lives in danger of everybody that parks on Front Street? We've narrowed those down. That is not right. That is not safe. So if we're going to fund money to widen these up here, we need to come back down, change our street standards and our parking standards to, to show that and reflect that. And like I say, I haven't seen anything as far as how we're going to address the traffic here. I also haven't seen anything, we talked in December about using the schools and that parking to help with some of the parking. I haven't seen anything addressed if that's gone forward because that could help alleviate that. And I would like to see some of those things that were discussed in December continued on. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Harrison.
Thanks. I, I know that's public comment and you can pretty much say whatever you want in public comment, but I think it's important to note that we haven't put nobody in danger on Front Street. While we narrowed the, the width of the parking there, it still meets all the standards and meets all the codes where there is no concern when we evaluated that by our engineering department. And while that's opinion, I think it's important to note that, you know, we do have a pretty significant concern on the width of the, of the drive there.
You know, I'm, I'm pretty sure that I asked about the width on Front Street, and I'm pretty sure it's, it's quite a bit wider than six feet. I'm not sure what the number is. It's either eight or nine feet, I believe.
Yep, your memory serves you well.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is the advantage of being an engineer. So yeah, because I had that question because we had, we had had here and other places concerns around the six foot standard, and I wanted to make sure we weren't going to a six foot standard on Front Street. And in fact, we're not going to a six foot standard on Front Street. So thank you very much. Appreciate joining us here this evening. Is there any other public comment?
My name's John Hilllock. I'm with Isakua Youth Football. You guys have seen me here many times before. I'm going to echo the same things that my fellow sports leaders have said. I think the, the thing that, one thing I will say is I feel really bad for our city parks department that has to deal with the knuckleheads that decide they're going to drive their cars onto that field right now and tear up all that grass and make it impossible for kids to play on it. I don't know if you've been up there this winter, but it happens frequently. This design pretty much eliminates that possibility even on the turf fields, right? Which makes those fields now usable beyond even them being turf. So I love that. The road widening, can't say it enough. I mean, if you've ever been up there, just open two car doors and see what happens, right? And then lastly, the, you know, I don't, I don't live in that area, but I, I've been at a lot of fields lately that are using LED lights. I was up at Chief K in Middle School, up in Mount Si area and some of the others that have just recently put them in, Skyline High School. It makes a huge difference, really does make a huge difference in just the light pollution and how much you see and the purity of the light and the focus and everything else. So for those neighborhoods alone, I would just say whatever we can do to get them, to get them reduced light pollution would be great. Make them happy. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to be left off the sports team, so. My name is Penny Moss. I've also been here several times and I'm representing Isakua Girls Lacrosse. And again, in echoing what everyone's saying, the road's so important and the increased volume with what this field will bring of traffic and children is, it's just, it's a mandatory thing to keep it safe for the kids. And I don't know about Front Street or whatever, but if you've ever seen the soccer clubs arrive at five o'clock up here, it's 200 kids spilling out into these fields. So, you know, little kids are a big concern regarding that. And then I would just say we're so excited about the field and so happy that everyone is considering this and trying to move forward with it because our club, being a, a small club, we don't really have the numbers for the algorithms for the priority of the fields. And we're seeking fields in Sammamish, we get them in Redmond, we go down to Starfire. So to have an additional field in Isakua would just be wonderful for all of our youth. And I love that we're putting all the lines on it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. What's that first step?
Yeah, I was supposed to be, supposed to be representing some kind of athletics in a trip coming up here. My name's Chip Light and I'm with Isakua Little League Baseball. We have minimal benefit from this, but I want to support our community partners, the other youth organizations. In my day job, I, I manage some large facilities at the university across the lake, and I'd like to say that the safety elements are, I definitely agree with those. And I would just urge everyone not to make the LED mistake and not do it. We are retrofitting all of our lights where I work and it'll be hard to come back and do it. It's a goodbye right now and I would just advocate for doing that now. And thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else wishing to speak on this measure this evening? Anyone else? Going twice. Anyone else? Third time. Third time's a charm. All right, thank you very much for your public comment. Really appreciate it. Extremely helpful. So, what do you want to do?
Uh, deliberate?
Yes, yeah, sorry. That's what I, yes.
Yeah. Well, I, I just had a few comments and then I'd love to hear what you have to say and I might come back to a couple of things. First of all, it just, in reading through the updated memo with you and your team, all the work that's been done in terms of the savings, the, the temporary lighting, the into light and through KCDA. through KCDA, and being able to provide information about being able to have some savings on that base bid. I appreciated seeing that. I think that overall, when I'm looking at the overrun, well, I guess I should back up to the, this is something that has been in the works for a long time, and we've gotten a lot of public outreach and engagement about wanting to see this part go forward. So, I'm really looking at, you know, the alternative of how would we do that? As opposed to taking it back to rebid and potentially having that come in higher. I don't know if there's any other upside to rebid if we think the costs are going to come in higher. Okay. I couldn't, yeah. I didn't think so. So, when I look at the overrun, I'd love to hear what Tola has to say about just the two bookends because I'm still really thinking about those two bookends and maybe that there's some sort of combination of the bookends that I might be interested in. But I wanted to talk about the alternates, everything that's been proposed. I wanted to have a rundown so I could see what the costs were. But as I look at those different elements, the LED lights, I've talked about this when we, you know, way back when, when we talked about this last, I think are really critically important for the neighborhood, and I would hate to see that left out. The widening of the roads is another, it's a safety issue. I'm, I have kids that have played at Central Park for years. I've been out there in the dark, in the rain with soccer balls and lacrosse balls and kids running everywhere. So, it is really a different thing because when, I think we just had public comment about everybody pulling up, it's time for practice or a game to start. And a lot of the kids are coming out of their car, you know, everybody's jumping out of the cars, and it just gets a little crazy up there. So, I think that the widening issue would be important. The amenities, thank you for listing all of those out. It's hard for me to think that, you know, that we would do all of this work and then not have the soccer goals and the mounds and the bike racks. And the mounding seems to be part of the design. So, it really leaves me only with the additional picnic shelter. But then, you know, when we're looking at this long-term, I just really like to see everything built out as people go up and they participate in tournaments and that kind of thing. It's really hard to not just have a place to sit down with your family in between games and everybody have a picnic or let the team sit down and eat. So, I think that I would be supportive of going forward with that additional amount, but I'm still a little bit up in the air on where that would come from.
Sure. And I noticed City Administrator Harrison has joined us again.
Yes, thanks. Well, I heard. I heard a question embedded in that statement, which was, should you take it out of general fund balance or your contingent, or the parks mitigation? And I think from our administration's perspective, it's six of one, half dozen of the other. In both cases, both can fund, you know, the park construction fund where the ultimate money comes from. I think our recommendation this time came as a result of the two budget meetings that we held last year where there is a desire by the council to try and preserve some of the parks mitigation balance. Yeah. So, certainly, you know, parks mitigation will continue to get, receive revenues as we see continued, you know, development occur in the community. Development pays for those fees for growth, and this is a very, you know, good example of a project that will help pay for additional capacity of soccer fields in that community. I think, you know, in having the conversation with the mayor, his goal was to just try and get the whole project done if we can, get into that area, disrupt, you know, disrupt it once. They all kind of do fit nicely together as a package. But I think it was definitely because we got the direction from council to split those, the bid up in that fashion, and it provided us some good data to at least evaluate it at the committee level here further to see if there's benefit one way or the other or something seemed logical to pull out. So, it gave kind of the maximum flexibility to you to make that decision. But ultimately, it's where, whatever, you know, the council feels comfortable with in terms of financing, I think in both cases, both accounts have healthy balances in them and shouldn't impact, you know, either one significantly. Now, we, obviously, we've got needs across the city that we need to fund, but I think the previous, first phase of the parks plan, I mean, identified soccer fields as one of the primary goals that we need, or shouldn't say soccer fields, all sports fields for all the other sports that are here. As one of the primary things. And all of these sports are growth industries in the community, and so the demand is going to continue to grow for that. So, the thought was, let's get it done. Let's get it done right. The parking lot, as you saw, we still have a temporary solution, but that may be at some point down the road that we come back to the council when we start to deal with some of the other pieces in the park. But at least this kind of brings a bookend, to use your earlier comment, to the parks bond in terms of getting almost all those projects done. Other than some open space, I think that we still have some funds available to finish that.
Thank you. Thanks. Appreciate that. So, to your question, I really prefer the option where we use general fund balance. You know, we've talked about as a council, general fund, we use general fund balance for one-time projects. We use it to not address systemic financial challenges, but, you know, specific opportunities in front of us. And I think this is a project that the community has shown ample support for and that it's very important for recreation opportunities. I, you know, in a perfect world, I would have the Parks Recreation Open Space Trails planned in front of me before doing this. And that's another reason, I think, to choose that option because it preserves the park mitigation fund in its broadest form to respond to what comes out of PROS 2. And so, it's, you know, it seems, it seems right to do it that way. I think you've articulated it, and City Administrator Harrison has articulated why the argument for keeping this package coherent and whole and including the alternates. And I know we've had a lot of debate about that, and we may still when all seven of us get together. But, you know, I'm convinced today that I think we should move forward with this bookend one option. As stated, with the $1,088,000 coming out of general fund, and then that leaves us with the most options around the park mitigation fund. I'm convinced that a 33% reserve is credibly ample for challenges that are coming before us. And I think that, I do think that the Finance Committee, which is actually meeting on Thursday, needs to take a look at, this is a sort of a systemic thing that is actually a little bit high, right? This ending fund balance. And so, we need to see what that means long-term. But right now, it makes it pretty, there's nothing that's painless when you spend the public's money, but this is, this seems like a pretty straightforward decision. So...
So, I would say that I, yeah, I think that when I was thinking about something that was a combination, I thank you for addressing some of, you know, giving some of the information about the general fund and seeing that that's well above the 15% double, that makes me feel a lot better. I know that there are a lot of projects, and there are things that definitely could come up. So, I, you know, and you can't look into a crystal ball, and I'm not sure exactly what those would be, but that the 33% seems very healthy. So, that makes me feel better. I know that I and other members of the council that we talked about trying to preserve as much of the park mitigation fund, and now that we're going through PROS 2 and we're looking at what could be done strategically, it seems an important time to be, to try to preserve that so we can move forward with some other important projects. So, I would be, I would agree.
Great. Okay. I think we have a 2 to 0 vote to move forward with the administration's recommendation on this, coming back May 15th, right? Full council? And I know, I want to take comment on the senior center, but I actually want to take the indulgence and take two minutes and run, and as they say, freshen up. So, I'll be right back. This is the problem of grabbing a 40-ounce bag.
I'll do the, I'll do the same.
And we're back. And I am now going to, as I mentioned earlier today, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the upcoming June presentation on the senior center status and whether there's any requests for information or supplemental information that they'd like to have from the city during this. And I see none. So, thank you all for staying for an extra five minutes. I appreciate it. Any closing comments? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.